Good evening and welcome to a special meeting for the Town Board for the town of Tustin. Meeting is called to order and join me in the pledge to the flag, please. Item two under special business with the seeker form part two.
Yeah, everybody's got, just to refresh everybody's recollection, about a year ago or so, you folks had made the lead agency termination and had adopted a part one of the seeker, which was basically the background information and description of what the project is and relevant information to it. And now, in order to complete seeker, you have to complete a part two, this is a full environmental assessment form. You have to complete part two, and that's been prepared by Delaware Engineering, Joe's firm, with recommended responses. And following that, if you will accept the responses as recommended by the engineer, I think the right thing to do would be without the resolution, adopting that part two as the Town Board's own. And then you can then move on to part three. Now, Joe, do you want to run them through the? Yeah, if you want, or I can if you want. It's your part two, so I just.
Question number one, impact on land. Proposed impacts may involve construction on or physical operation of land surface on site. That is correct. Proposed action would involve construction on and physical operation of the lands. So from that point on, none of these sub-questions are believed to have a moderate or large impact. The project action may involve construction on land where depth of water is less than three feet. Depth to water table is less than three feet. We did, we did some analysis and we have found that the amount of land on which the water table is believed to be less than three feet is minimal. We also believe that none of the new structures would be constructed on those parts of the water district. The proposed action may involve construction on a slope of fifteen percent or greater. While there are parts of the water district that have a slope of that, you know, fifteen percent or greater, there are no proposed structures going on that, you know, those parts of the district and due to the type of construction that might occur, just being water main replacement, based on the seeker guidelines, this would not constitute a moderate to large impact. Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed, generally within five feet of existing ground surface. We do not believe that this is the case anywhere where proposed actions will take place. Proposed action may involve excavation and removal of more than a thousand tons of natural material. This should not occur due to the proposed improvements. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. This may be the case, but based on seeker guidelines, you would only select large to moderate impact for this one if it was continuous. If it is intermittent construction, say, you know, during the spring of each year for several years, based different parts of the district, then you are directed to say no or small impact for that question. The proposed action may result in an increase in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. We do not believe this would occur. No major vegetation removal should exist and any erosion that would occur would be very minor during construction and should be limited by standard construction practices. The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard zone, this is not the case. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves. Based on the DEC's Environmental Resources Mapper, we do not believe that there are any such features within the water district, so that is a no.
Joe, let me just interrupt you for a second.
Absolutely.
As you see by going through the first question, the second question, you got the first broad question, the yes or no question, and where the answer is yes is one, then you go through sub- parts to see whether you would have either a small or small impact or moderate to large impact. And in this instance, the question, the general question is answered no, so you don't have to do the subparts, you move on to the next question.
Is that applied to every?
Throughout the entire form, yep.
All right, number three, impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. The water district is on the Delaware River, and there are several small lakes within the water district. So the possibility is there, so I said yes for this one. The proposed action may create a new water body, it will not do that. The proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over ten percent or more than a ten acre increase or decrease to surface area of any body of water. We do not propose actions that would have any increase or decrease to any body of water, so that is a no. Proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from any wetland or water body. There is no dredging proposed as a part of this project. The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the bed or banks of any other water body. All of the proposed improvements are outside the banks of the river, and we do not believe that they will be within any state or national wetland. The proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or disturbing bottom sediments. We do not believe that any of the proposed improvements should result in increased turbidity to any body of water. Proposed action may include construction of one or more intake or withdrawal from water, or from surface water. The water system uses groundwater as its source. No water would be taken or released to surface water as the proposed improvements are designed. The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to service water. There is no proposed discharge of wastewater associated with this project. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may be to a situation or other, or to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. We do not believe that any erosion caused during construction would have a major impact. And all through standard erosion and sediment control practices, we believe that this would be limited. Based on seeker guidelines, we feel that no or small impact is the correct answer to that question. The proposed action.
You're okay.
A proposed action may affect-
The game show.
The water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the- the site of the proposed action. We do not believe that it will. The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. Nothing that we're doing in this project would involve pesticides or herbicides. The proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. We're dealing with water facilities, we do not believe the wastewater treatment facility should be affected by this project. Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. Nothing that we're proposing would introduce contaminants into the groundwater, and we do not believe that this project would result in any change to the amount of groundwater that's being used by the water district. So I, so that one we believe to be a no. Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. There are portions of the district that are within the hundred or 500-year floodplains. So this is a yes, but just to before I go through all these, because all of the structures that are proposed within the floodplain are either replacement of existing structures such as fire hydrants or replacement of sub, you know, below grade structures like water mains. We do not believe that any of the proposed improvements would have any impact to flood zones or the flow of water during a flood event. So proposed action may result in development in any designated floodway. While it does, we do not believe that it would have any impact, and this is according to the seeker guidelines as well. So that would be a no. Proposed action may result in development within the 100-year floodplain and 500-year floodplain. This is true, but once again, low ground structures or replacement of fire hydrants, nothing that would alter the flow of water during a flood in any way. The proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. We do not believe that it would. Proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding, we do not believe that it would. If there is a dam located on the site of the proposed action, is the dam in need of repair or upgrade? But we do not believe that that is the case. Impacts on air, the proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. We do not believe that this project would include any state-regulated air emission source. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in the loss of flora or fauna. There is the potential for some common plants, grass, bushes to be removed during the installation of the new water storage tank or the new pump station, so this is a yes. The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed on New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. We do not believe that any of the activities of this project would result in a loss of any endangered or threatened species. The proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or federal government. We do not believe that the habitat would be altered in any way at the end of this project. The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. We also believe that that would be a no or small impact. Proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species or special concern and conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government. We do not believe that to be the case. Proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to protect. I do not believe that that is the case. Proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community. For this one, they asked for a source. We use the DEC's online environmental resources map. It shows that there are no proposed, or there are no designated significant natural communities within the area of the proposed work. There are some within the area of Narrowsburg, but they are either upstream or downstream of Narrowsburg itself. Proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwinter habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site. Nesting and breeding, foraging, all these things should not be affected by anything proposed by this project. Proposed action requires the conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat. We would not be converting we would not be converting any land. Any forest land will remain forest land, most of what we're doing is going to be within pre-existing roadways. And just to, proposed action, commercial, industrial, blah, 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 projects only involves use of herbicides or pesticides. Once again, we're not using herbicides or pesticides, and this is not a commercial or industrial project. And just to sum up on that one, there are some known registered species that live within the area of Narrowsburg, but these are predominantly associated with the river, so you have freshwater vertebrates and invertebrates that live in the river that are considered protected to some degree. But we do not believe that anything that this project is proposing would affect the river in any way. All improvements are well outside of the banks of the river. We don't think anything should impact those species. So those are all no's for that one. Impact on agricultural resources, the proposed action may impact agricultural resources. None of the properties within the district, to the best of my knowledge, are agricultural properties at this time, so that I believe is a no. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed actions are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. We would only be constructing two structures that might have any impact on the aesthetic look. One is the water tank, which we would be replacing one water tank with a different water tank, so we believe the aesthetics of that would be consistent. The other would be a small building to house a pump station. We believe that this would be similar in construction to the existing wellhouses. So we don't think that this would have a substantial aesthetic change to any part of the water district. And then aside from that, fire hydrants and water mains would, wouldn't change the aesthetics of the district, so we believe that to be a no. Impact on historical or archaeological resources, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historical or archaeological resource. This is a yes, because it is known that there are several properties within the water district that are on the history, historical register. And SHPO has designated this area as potentially including historic or archaeological resources. So for this one, we said yes. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. So there are several buildings within the district, but no proposed improvements would occur on those properties and nothing would be altered. No alterations will be made to any of those buildings. It would at most be water main being replaced in the street outside of those properties. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area design or designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO Archaeological Site Inventory. Parts of the district are within such an area. We have conducted a a, what's called a 1A, 1B archaeological study. This was something that the State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation requested we do before we moved forward. We completed that report and the the state accepted that report. There were no archaeological or historically significant artifacts found during that study. So the, so SHPO has told us that they have no objection with us proceeding with this project, so that is a no. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not included on the New York SHPO inventory. We do not believe that is the case, so that is a no. If the answer to any AD moderate to large impact occur, continue with the following questions to help support conclusion part three. The answer to all of those was no, but we went through this anyway. The proposed action may result in destruction or alteration of all or part of the site or property. It would not result in any alteration or destruction of any such site or property. Proposed action may result in the alteration of the property's setting or integrity. It would not do that either. Proposed action may result in the introduction of visual elements which are out of character with the site or property or may alter its setting. Once again, that would not be the case. Impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in a loss or a loss of recreational opportunity or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in an adopted municipal open space plan. We do not believe that this would be the case, so for that one, it is a no. Impact on critical environmental areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. We believe that the project is not located within or adjacent to any critical environmental areas.
There's no CEA anywhere in Solvang County. That would be specifically designated as such by the state of New York, and that is not one of those.
That is a no. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. If would not, all roads would still go where they are going. Impact on energy, the proposed action may result in an increase in the use of amount of any form of energy. The answer to that is yes, because it is possible that some of the new equipment put in wellhouses or at the new water storage tank might result in the use of a slightly increased amount of electricity, and the new pump station would result in the use of more electricity than is currently being used by the water district. The proposed action will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation, this is not the case. The proposed action will require the creation of or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single or two-family residences or to serve a commercial or industrial use. No, no new residences or commercial or industrial buildings would be constructed, so no, that is a no. The proposed action may utilize more than 2,500 megawatt hours per year of electricity, we do not believe it would use that much energy. The proposed action may involve heating and or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed. We do not anticipate heating or cooling any new square footage of building area. At most 50 by 50, that's very, very conservative. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. There may be some some lighting installed by the new water storage tank that would allow water operators to check on things if there were ever something that went wrong at night. This lighting would be motion censored or set up so that they would be able to turn it on and off when they needed it, so we do not expect that would have a significant impact. The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. Nothing in the project should increase the noise levels long-term. The proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home, there should be no blasting associated with this project, so that is a no. Proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour of the day. We do not believe there is any reason that that should occur. Proposed action may result in light shining on to adjacent, adjoining properties. It would be, we would make sure that the lights that may be installed at the water storage tank would not shine onto adjoining properties, and that property is well, it has significant amount of tree cover, so we think it would be well separated from any of the adjacent residential properties. Proposed action may result in lighting, creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. This would not be the case. Any new lighting would be facing downward and would not, would not create any sky glow. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contamination. We do not believe there would be any new sources of contamination caused by this project in any way, so that is a no. Consistency with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. We believe that the project is not out of consistency with any existing land use plans. Consistency with community character, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. We do not believe this is the case, as the community currently has essentially all of the structures that we are proposing. Replacement of or addition of similar structures to what already exists within the water.
That's, that's the end of the, of the part two. Any questions, I guess? So the purpose of the part two is for you to basically analyze whether or not there is the potential for any large to moderate impacts, which based upon the engineers' recommendations, there's nothing to indicate that that would be the case. My suggestion is that before you move on to the part three, which is the determination of significance, that, that if you're in agreement with what the engineers' recommendations and observations are here, that I think the board ought to adopt the resolution to accept part two as prepared and recommended by the engineers as the town boards.
Does the board have any questions of the engineer? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept part two of the full environmental assessment form prepared for water system improvement projects as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that was the point where you get to make the, the so-called determination of significance. Your options are that you can either find that there is the potential for a significant adverse environmental impact, which would result in a positive declaration and take the road down this, down the road of doing an an environmental impact study or reaching a conclusion which would probably be the one that's supportive, not probable, which is the one that would be supported by the answers that were given in the part two, which is that, what's called a negative declaration, that there are no potential adverse environmental impacts that are likely to result in the project as it's presented. And Joe, you may want to elaborate a little more. He's got a part three prepared, they explain that this determination would be based upon the environmental assessment form and some other materials that were garnered, both in the process of surveying other interested or involved agencies to see what their reaction was to the project when determining the lead agency and who would be the lead agency. I think it was also a supplemental sheet that you guys had put together in conjunction with the part three, which pointed to some specific things in the, either the part two or the part one that supported the neg deck as well. There you go. If the one, if the bleed's over, it's one whole page, and bleed over onto the next page, and I'll leave it to Joe, you can elaborate on this as you see.
This is essentially explanations to why we said no to some of the specific questions before, and I believe I touched on most of this during my previous monologue there, but the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year. I touched on that, depending on the availability of funds, the project may need to be completed in multiple phases in order to decrease the upfront cost impact to water district customers. Additionally, due to the significant amount of water main which is proposed to be replaced, it may take more than one construction season to complete all replacement work. This is not anticipated to cause a significant environmental impact since the work will be spread throughout the district, not concentrated in any one location, and will be intermittent and will primarily occur within paved roadways. Then the next part is essentially what I said about 100-year and 500-year floodplains, and it's essentially the same answer for both, although development may occur within the 100-year floodplain, nearly all proposed work within the floodplain involves replacing the water mains below low grade, primarily under existing, existing paved roadways. No new above-ground structures are proposed within floodplains as a part of this project, no alteration to water or drainage patterns will occur. And that is the same for the 500-year floodplain. As a part of this project, no alteration to water or drainage patterns will occur. And that is the same for the five hundred year floodplain. Impacts on plants and animals. I also think I touched on this. Although it is possible that some common flora and or fauna such as grass, trees, common bushes may be slightly and temporarily impacted by this project. It is not likely that this project will have any significant or long-term impacts on or of fauna. And there are no listed species that may be impacted by this project. Firstly, nearly all proposed work will occur within previously developed areas such as paved roads and previously graded, excavated and developed properties. Secondly, most significant flora and fauna in the vicinity of the project live in or around the Delaware River and the proposed work included in this project will not impact the Delaware River. Or occur within or near its banks. Impact on historical archaeological resources. Although the project will occur near several buildings which are listed on the national or state register of historical places. These structures and the properties they occupy will not be impacted by the proposed work. This work would primarily involve replacing the water mains within the right way of existing paved roads. And all the, all the project will take place within an area designated as archaeologically sensitive. It is unlikely that any impact will occur. This is because nearly all work will occur within previously disturbed areas. Additionally, an archaeological survey, part one A, one B was conducted and the result resulted in the issuance of a letter of no impact by the New York O P R H P.
So you've got a part three that's been prepared and by and recommended by the engineering firm Delaware Engineering and by Joe on its behalf, which sets forth a proposed finding of a negative declaration that the project will not result in significant adverse impacts on the environment and therefore an environmental impact statement would not be needed. It has what they like to refer to in secret parlance as a reasoned elaboration for that, which is what Joe just went through. What's spelled out on the face of the document. And again, it would be appropriate, it's the board's pleasure to do so to adopt the resolution accepting this and authorizing Ben to sign it on behalf of the town board's lead agency. And it has to be signed and dated. Halfway down to the second page of the.
Board have any questions to the engineer regarding this? No, I would make a motion to accept part three of the full environmental assessment form prepared for water system project as presented with a determination and negative declaration, no significant adverse impact and authorize the supervisor to sign.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So at this point, let's show you. Otherwise, I think the town board has fulfilled its obligations under the state environmental quality review act with regard to this project. And you're prepared to go forward with your next steps. And the first of those next steps is the holding of the public hearing, which is scheduled to commence just five minutes ago. So we're not doing too bad here on time.
Can I close this meeting in order to open the public?
No, the meeting stays, the, the meeting stays open. Open the public hearing. It'll, it'll occur within the meeting because when you, when you close the public hearing, you're going to continue with the meeting to, to take the necessary following actions under both town law and under the public finance law, the local finance law. I'm sorry to deal with making findings that are required for the addition of facilities of the water district and then for financing those, those facilities, if that's what your decision is.
At this point, I will open the public hearing. First of all, I'll take comments from the room first.
Ben, before you do that, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't yes, isn't she online? And I think she's going to make a little presentation for the benefit of not only the board, but the public at large, so that they can understand something about the project. So they can make, any comments they make will be informed comments that, that the board can then consider. So you might want to do that before you actually take commentary.
That is a good point. Thank you. Thank you, Helen.
Thanks. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So I'm going to share my screen. I have a quick PowerPoint presentation. So if you'll bear with me for one second.
You can make that as big as possible.
Yep, it's maximized on my end. So I think the host might need to make it better or bigger or share the, the view. Can everybody see that for now? Sorry.
They can't really see much of it.
Small screen.
We don't, did not have the, a projector prepared. Unfortunately.
Excuse me?
We did not have a projector prepared. So they're looking at a laptop screen and some of them are.
I gotcha. But hopefully folks that are on the Zoom call will be able to see it, but I'll go through. And then I can also provide a copy of the presentation for the public record as well. Perfect. So again, we're, we're here to have a public hearing on the Narrowsburg border system improvement project. The public hearing is required by law in accordance with town law section two oh two B, which basically says that whenever a town resolves to undertake a project to improve or reconstruct existing facilities on behalf of a water district, a public hearing must be held. So you can see from the map, hopefully the orange is sort of the hamlet of Narrowsburg and the blue are, is the boundary of the existing water district. The water district covers about four hundred and forty-five acres. There's three hundred and forty service connections which serve roughly five hundred people. And the water district was actually created quite a while ago, back in, in nineteen twenty-five. So the reasons for the project and why we're here today is that the water system, although it's had some, you know, some, some minor improvements here and there over the years, really hasn't had a, a major overhaul in, in quite some time. So the first reason for the project and probably one of the most important is that the existing water storage tank has been in use for over seventy years. That's, that's well beyond its useful life expectancy. And it needs major repairs or, or replacement. The other issues of concern are that water pressure is a concern within the system, particularly along Route ninety-seven, which is the, the outlying areas of the district. Although the well houses, the town has three wells, the well houses are in generally good shape, but they don't have backup generators to ensure that they will continue operating during a power outage. They don't have equipment to detect chlorine gas leaks and they don't have sort of modern controls. In addition, many of the water mains are aging and need replacement. Some are as old as ninety-five years. Others are buried too deep or are undersized. Some are dead end lines, which impacts water pressure and water quality. A lot of the fire hydrants and water valves are aging and have limited to no operability. There are too few water valves in portions of the district. And because of the age of the system, water loss is a major concern. And the town would benefit from a concerted effort to locate and eliminate those those leaks and sources of, of water loss. And that will help make operation more efficient. So a quick overview of the water system, just in, in sort of layman's terms is, again, the, the town has three wells. The, the groundwater is drawn through the wells and then it's pumped to two hundred gallon storage tank. Then it is distributed through the system through about thirty-nine thousand linear feet of pipe to the end user. Again, there's about three hundred and forty service connections serving about five hundred residents. So the proposed improvements that are part of this project are first and foremost, replacing the existing two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand gallon water tank with a new two hundred and fifty thousand gallon water tank with new sensors and controls. The well house improvements, I mentioned that before, the upgrades would include new emergency generators, chlorine gas detection and flow, flow measuring equipment. It would include water main replacement of some twenty-four hundred linear feet of deep buried mains. Undersized distribution mains would be replaced. Some new mains would be installed to eliminate dead ends. And then remaining aging water mains would also be replaced. In addition, a new booster pump station would be installed on Route ninety-seven to improve water pressure in that area. Fifteen of the existing, sorry, fifty-five of the existing fire hydrants would be replaced and four new hydrants would be added. Forty-seven existing valves would be replaced and twenty-seven new valves would be installed. And then finally, four new permanent auto flushing stations would be installed throughout the system. So as you can see, this is a pretty comprehensive upgrade that addresses sort of every aspect of the, of the water system. Just really quickly, I wanted to give you an idea of some of the improvements. Joe can address any technical questions. Because the, the district is so large, I just wanted to zoom in on, on some key areas. Anywhere you see these yellow crosses, those are new water valves. Anywhere you see these sort of blue dashed lines, those are new water mains. Red are fire hydrants that would be replaced. So this zooms in on sort of the main street, bridge street and the flats area, and just so that you can see the extent of some of the improvements. And then this is a, a close-up of some of the improvements along Route ninety-seven. Here's the location of the existing water tank and the proposed water tank. And then down the end of ninety-seven is where the new booster pump station would be installed to improve water flow. So the million dollar question is how much is this going to cost? That is really the purpose for requiring a public hearing through town law to make sure that the public understands what the potential impact might be on district ratepayers. So with all of the improvements that I just went through, the total project cost would not exceed seven point five million. That is a, a maximum number we're required by law to, to basically present the worst case scenario. We are assuming a potential interest rate of two percent through financing provided by the environmental facilities corporation. That's subsidized, subsidized financing. E F C does provide zero percent hardship financing to some municipalities that meet certain requirements for low income populations. The town did not meet that threshold in the last year. So we're assuming that the town will be able to receive some form of subsidized financing instead. And then finally, there is the potential to secure a grant of up to three million dollars through a program called W I A, the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. That is grants that are available for up to sixty percent of the total project cost. It maxes out at three million. Those grants are not part of the C F A grant process that's currently been announced and due at the end of July. Typically, those grants are announced a little bit later in the summer and applications are due in the early fall. So our intent is to apply for those grants as soon as they are announced and available. So a quick overview of the current costs is right now the system as a whole costs about two hundred thousand dollars a year to operate and maintain. That cost is distributed through water rates to the users of the system. Currently, there is no capital debt on the system because there hasn't been major improvements in a long time. So if you take that seven point five million at two percent interest over thirty years and assume a three million dollar grant, the projected capital cost would be about two hundred thousand dollars a year to repay that debt capital and interest. So what does that mean to the average user? You have to understand that water rates are actually split into two pieces. When you're paying for a, a water system, you're paying for operation and maintenance, which anyone that's connected to the system will pay for operation and maintenance through water rates. And then there's a capital portion. So that's the portion of any debt for capital improvements. And typically, every property in the district, even vacant land that is not hooked up to the water system pays their fair share of the capital cost. So right now in Narrowsburg, the average user pays about two hundred dollars annually for water service. That's the average of all users. So that's residential, commercial. The law requires that we disclose the average residential user impact. So the average residential user, a typical single-family home in Narrowsburg right now, based on the, the formula for how billing is done, pays approximately a hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents annually for water service. Now, just as a point of comparison, that actually is quite a bit less than the average statewide, which is actually eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars a year is what the average residential user across New York state pays for water service. So that just gives you a, a sense of comparison. Projected water rates, average across the board, again, residential and commercial based on, on the formula for charging water rates. That will go up to seven hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents from two hundred and ten and eighty cents. And the average residential user might see an increase from a hundred and forty-two forty to six thirty-one eighty-nine. That's essentially a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents per quarter, which is how the billing is done. And you can see the reason for that is the share of the capital costs. Operation and maintenance is expected to stay the same. So it's still that same two hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents a year that the average person is, is paying for the operation and maintenance. But when you add the, the share of the capital improvements for a seven point five million dollar upgrade, that goes up to potentially worst case scenario, up to six hundred and thirty-one dollars and change. And again, for comparison purposes, the New York State Comptroller's Office keeps data on water rates for every district in New York state. And the statewide average for twenty twenty-one for a typical residential property is eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars a year. So it's still below the state average, even with worst case scenario of the seven point five million dollar project. So the take-home messages for today in terms of public comments and questions is that unfortunately, the water system needs to be upgraded sooner rather than later. Nobody likes to, to pay more, especially in these hard economic times. But this is a, a vital service that's provided to the residents in the district and the upgrade really needs to, to happen sooner rather than later. The most critical issue is replacing the water tank. That needs to be addressed really first. The tank has been in use for over seventy years and really is in bad shape. As we said before, some sections of water main are believed to be ninety-five years old. Making water main breaks and leaks increasingly lightly. A concerted effort to locate and eliminate sources of water loss could actually help decrease annual operation costs, which could lower rates over the long term. And the last point is that the new annual water rate that could potentially result from this project is still, even though it's a big jump from what people are, are currently paying, it's still below the recommended affordability range of one and a half percent of the annual median income, which ends up being about six hundred and ninety dollars for Narrowsburg. So the next steps from here are after the public hearing and the comments from the public, the town will, will have the opportunity to actually adopt a bond resolution, which your council will advise you on in terms of the details. The state revolving loan fund financing application deadline is actually this Friday. I know this project has been delayed because of the archaeological resource issue and, and some other things. So normally we wouldn't cut it this close, but we are prepared to submit a financing application by Friday's deadline. As I said before, we, our grants have not yet been announced for twenty twenty-one, but we expect that they will be. As I said before, WEA grants have not yet been announced for twenty-twenty-one, but we expect that they will be available in a few months. And then with any luck, usually it's around a, a six-to-nine-month turnaround time to actually execute a finance agreement with EFC, at which point the town will have more detail on the actual financing terms, including the interest rate, and can make decisions about whether or not to do a portion of the project, to phase it, you know, or to do the entire seven-point-five-million-dollar project. From there, once a financing agreement is executed, next year would be dedicated to doing the engineering design permitting and bidding, with construction commencing in twenty-twenty-three and concluding in twenty-twenty-four. So that's an overview of the project, and I, I don't know if Joe has anything else to add, but if you'd like to formally open the public hearing and, and get questions and comments from the public, that would be great.
Joe, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Did a good job, Helen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
From the room, we'll start. Mike, Mike Farrell.
As Helen indicated and as the report indicated that posted online, the water loss is apparently described as significant. Do we know how much in terms of water produced versus what actually runs by the meters?
Not to be quoted, I, I don't believe Dave is in the... Okay. We are, we are producing approximately eight million gallons of water.
Twelve million, seven hundred thousand.
Okay, we are producing twelve million.
Yeah, twelve point seven million, I was under the impression was what we needed.
Okay, and we were producing...
That I don't know.
I believe between fourteen and sixteen million gallons are producing.
How many?
Between fourteen and sixteen million. So we're, we're producing several million gallons more. I, I believe the last I knew was approximately two million gallons.
That, maybe is that, that is something that's leaking?
It's going into the system from the well, and it's not coming into the meter, so it's, it's, it's being lost within the closed system.
We have no idea exactly where or where all this water, where those two million gallons are sitting.
No, we've, we've done, some of it has been repaired, but then recently, just did a repair underneath Route ninety-seven. Got the leak shut off. Another leak came out right behind it, we can't find it. And water travels, unfortunately. It's something I have learned, water can travel quite a distance and pop up somewhere else, so.
I believe that was Ed Norton's advice, too.
The leak increases the pressure, and it finds another weak spot to get out.
Another possible source of loss is the way the water storage tank is designed right now, there is no level sensing equipment that would shut the system off if the water tank came too full. Right now, the water storage tank is filled manually. Essentially, the, the operators have to shut the wells off or turn them on based on the pressure in the system. Typically, you would have some sort of sensor equipment in the tank that would tell the system to shut itself off before water begins to overflow from the tank. So overflow from the water storage tank is a potential source of loss. We would like to add some sort of sensing equipment. Not only would that make the amount of time that the water operator would need to spend going to sites and turning things off, it would increase the efficiency of the system and hopefully reduce water loss.
Yeah, we just, the, the questions from the floor just need to be loud enough to be picked up on microphone for those people that are on Zoom, that's all. Even if you have to come forward, you're more than welcome.
I'll be happy to repeat my question. Repeat your answer. My question was meeting up to the last comment on coordination, whether in fact there was a similar system in operation for five hundred customers or less that we could go and look at or point to.
And my response to that is, I do not have a specific example on, on my mind, but I can point to it. I could look into that for you and possibly provide some examples.
I would also ask you, in your research, you mentioned, well, you mentioned during the presentation that in the event of electrical power outage, it could interrupt the order of supply. In your research for the system, do you want to indicate incidents where this has taken place? Would the town without order be to electrical outage?
I'm, I believe Dave can probably answer that question better for us. Dave?
Yeah, we have been without power after the tornado. We have a portable generator that is from World War II that we haul around trying to keep up water pressure.
Thank you. That's the superintendent of the district.
So you were out of power, but not out of water?
The, the town was out of power, and the personnel for the water department utilized a mobile generator and used that to try to keep the, the pressure up enough so that they could be used throughout the town.
I'm going to ask, on the coordination top, is, is that a system that involves internet or...
There are different ways of doing it. We were proposing a, either a radio or telephone system. So signals will be transmitted either through telephone line or by a radio transmission. There would be, there would be some computer involvement at each site. So there would be either a small human machine interface at each location. So each wellhouse, the pump station, and the water tank. But there wouldn't necessarily need to be any connection from all of those.
So it's not subject to ransomware?
It would not be. It would essentially be a closed, closed system where radio, radio waves are going from up high to the water storage tank. Signal would be transmitted from the hall of fame to the various wellhouses. It should not, to the best of my knowledge, be subject to that. I don't think it would be connected to you. I, I believe it would be a closed system. It would not be connected to that.
What type of long-term vendor service contracts would be associated with this automated equipment?
Well, that would be something that would have to be determined during design. We would recommend a non-proprietary, non-proprietary software system of some sort that would kind of eliminate your dependence on a specific company to provide that service. And you would be able to hire less, less specialized contractors to do upgrades, replacement work on that thing. That would be our, our recommendation, and that would be something that would be determined during the design.
The reason I, I bring up the concern simply because of the small customer base. You know, sometimes keeping it simple on a small operation while you don't affect your greatest efficiency, as all of us drove here petrol cars, petrol-powered cars, not electric cars, you know, there's some practicality in trying to keep a system small, especially when it's worn by so many customers. So that would be...
That is a good point, and you're certainly not wrong about that. When I'm talking about automation in this case, it's not really a very big or expansive system. Couple of small electronic boxes, one at each wellhouse, and the wellhouses already have electronic equipment in them. It would really just be a matter of installing something that would allow them to communicate with each other. Really is not a very large portion of what we're estimating. The point is taken, but it would not be as significant amount of work or equipment required to get this communication done.
I have some more questions about with some other folks.
Any other questions from the floor?
Are there going to be any more additional fire hydrants? Different locations?
Yeah, I believe there were four or five that were supposed to be added.
Yes, with regards to grants, you mentioned very specifically grants. The word is, is we will apply. Who, who actually is applying? Is engineering firm applying this grant?
They, they most likely will on our behalf, yes.
On behalf of the township.
The town would be the applicant. We have been working with the town, and we'd be happy to continue working with the town to throw out applications. That's that we're trying to acquire funding for the project.
I know that we, money was spent to hire eternity for floating the bond. Has there been any consideration in spending money on a grant consultant in the field who may be able to seek out grants in other areas, possibly from private entities like the giving place, the giving place being gates and buffets and folks, private entities that are trying to help small rural underserved communities? Would there be a consideration of possibly getting a, a grant consultant or entertaining or discussing with a great consultant if there was money to be found elsewhere?
Everybody's looking at me. Actually, I, I think that the engineering firm has the experience with the grant agencies for water. And that's been our experience, that they really are up on everything. I, I speak to Joe frequently on this issue as to has anything else opened up? And we are looking at one other avenue, which is the REAP Board, which is the USDA money, but it won't be much, but we are exploring that as well.
I've worked with Candace Ballmer of RCAP Solutions. She is a good resource when it comes to knowing what's available and what is practical for grants in the area.
Yes, just so that you know, can, RCAP is a, what is, what's the acronym for rural or... It's a federally funded program that, for assistance for rural communities for infrastructure, primarily water and wastewater, I think. And I happened to meet her at a conference, the representative for our area, and she's been very, very helpful. And when I asked her as well about other funding, she said Delaware Engineering is very knowledgeable on that, so we feel comfortable.
Helen, had, had you been looking to see any of these outside of the those two funds that were mentioned in the presentation and security?
I know that we most typically do pursue state and federal grant programs. As far as private grant programs, I personally do not have much experience of pursuing those. I know that I did do a little bit of research on the Bill and Melon Gates Foundation and did not find anything that seemed that we, we might follow about that. I've, I've done some research on a couple of them and have so far not found, unfortunately.
Also, our income level makes it so that we aren't able to get, a lot of communities get other grants because they're a low-income community, and we don't qualify for that.
And Jane, could I add to that? Can you still hear me?
Yes, please do.
No, I, I just want to say, just to echo what, what Joe said. Typically, you know, public infrastructure is a very sort of specialized area. And typically, you're talking about state and federal grants that help municipalities with the cost of infrastructure. It's, it's very rare in my experience that private foundations will invest in those kinds of projects because they're regarded as, as being more a general obligation of government. But on the bright side, I think everybody has, has probably heard some of the national debate about a federal infrastructure bill. And if something like that is passed, then we'd be in a position to apply for some additional federal money for infrastructure, depending upon what, you know, what comes out. Because they're going to be looking for projects that are essentially ready to go. So we're hopeful that there will be some additional grant money coming down from the federal government. WEA is a state grant program, so we will not leave any stone unturned.
I would then wrap up with my question saying, this may be a reach, but perhaps with the SEAMIL, as a water customer, USDA, there might be something through the USDA for local food security, something like that, or homeland security money. Because, just to throw it out there. You gotta think out the box when you've got only three hundred forty customers and paying for the project to start. Thank you.
Thanks for thinking out of the box.
Any online questions? Colin, do you have a question?
Repeat that again. You speaking to me?
I wasn't sure if you had a question.
Yes, I do. I have a couple of questions. In the past thirty years, how many new customers have we gotten in the water district? There's been around about three hundred and twenty for the past thirty years. So we are embarking on a massive project. And the second question is, how many times the existing system has broken down that it had to be? The third question is, you spoke of mobile generator. Is that generator that's parked on Kirk Road? Because if I remember correctly, Jane Luxinger had gotten some grants to put in generators for all the wells. Whatever happened to those generators back in the day? And that mobile generator on Kirk Road hasn't moved there as far as I remember, and I pass there four times a day. So I don't know what, what generator he's talking about, Second World War generators that are going to help him pump the water. And the last question is Delaware Engineering. This question is directed at you, sir. You were hired, my understanding is, to do a project for the Town of Liberty. Correct me if I'm wrong, was your services terminated, and if they were, for what reason, sir?
I, I don't know that I actually want Joe to answer that question, Colin, because it's not relevant to what our public hearing is, which is comments on this system.
I mean, with due respect, Mr. Supervisor, we are spending seven and a half billion dollars for the water district, and the consumers of the water district are the ones who are going to pay. And yet, nobody, nobody from the water district sits on any of these boards or able to review hot copies of what you guys are coming up with.
I'm not sure how to answer that, Colin, to tell you the truth, because we've got...
The answer is the legal structure that the state law established.
Yeah.
You have a water district, the water district is operated by the town board, the town board is elected by the populace of the town. That's, that's the legal structure, that's the answer to it.
The legal structure. What member of the town board has ever visited any of the wells in question?
Well, I'll start with Al, Jane, and myself, Colin. We've all visited those wells and we've seen. So, you know, we're here to take comments.
I, I'm here. But due respect, you know, I'm one of those guys who are going to pay an increased water bill, and I have a couple of water bills. And that's why the questions, you know, you know, if you're going to use that to do the fire hydrant... And that's why the questions, you know, you know, if you're going to use that to do the fire hydrants, yeah, and he's going to put in a 200,000, 250,000 gallon tank and replace a 200,000 gallon tank. You know, one of the pumps on the fire truck will empty that tank in no time. And that, that means the town will be left without a war, without any water?
So is your suggestion that we should go for a bigger tank than the 250,000 gallon tank?
I think the fire hydrants, you correct me if I'm wrong, I see a member of the fire department there. Correct me if I'm wrong, the fire hydrants are strictly to knock down the initial fire and we have to search for other sources of water. Because using that tank will empty the town tank in no time. Isn't that correct, Mr. Buckle?
Yeah, we, we use the fire hydrers if they're in, fired in the district, we use the fire hydrers and then use the pumps. I would assume that the pumps, three pumps will recirculating the water to fill up the tank at the same time.
So this.
Enough water will use a dry hydrant, by literally here.
So basically.
Is your suggestion, Colin, that we should be looking at a, at a larger water tank for the purpose of fire suppression?
That's not within my purview. We have an engineer, maybe he should look at that. And the situation of the future tank, where is that going to be located? We haven't seen any topographical map of the area that's going to be supplying this water. If they're going to choose a new place to put that water tank.
No, I did sit the same location that we've got.
I can answer that for you, Colin. The proposed water storage tank would be located on the same property as the existing water storage tank.
Oh, okay.
It would be actually at a location where the previous water storage tank was before the current one was built. The area has actually already essentially been prepared for a water storage tank because there was one there. We would probably have to demolish a little bit of old concrete foundation in order to put in new concrete foundation. But aside from that, there should not be significant grading or tree cutting required. There are some saplings that I believe have grown up over the, you know, 70 year period. So some brushing, some tree removal, but that is essentially a flat space directly next to the existing water storage tank that we are proposing to, to use for that. It will be at the same elevation. We would perhaps look at trying to make the water storage tank a little bit taller than the existing one to help with pressure a little bit. We don't want to overdo it with that either, since there is such a variance in elevation throughout the district. We don't want to improve pressures in one location just to make them too high in other locations. So essentially we would want that to stay relatively somewhere.
And Joe, would you mind addressing the generator question issue? I'm not sure if I misspoke, but I believe generators are still part of the project, correct?
Generators are part of the project for at least two of the three well houses. There, as Dave said, there is a mobile one that's currently in use. During an emergency, you would have to either rely on one well or you would have to use one well and then move the generator to a different well. I'm not, I'm not certain where it's located.
It's located, located on, I think, two, out of the two wells that are being used now. It's located on the, the, down, down below on the flat. So.
Number one, I believe. Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
And that is a World War II generator because I actually happen to be there and saw it, so.
I mean, that doesn't make it any less of a generator. It's still able to.
No, no, it, no, it work, it works. It's as a generator. That's the one he was talking about.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, didn't you acquiesce monies for generators?
Yes, but that was, that was for town hall.
No, 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 you were explicit about the wells having their own backup generators and.
I think I was explicit that they needed them, but the money we had, we received money from actually Sullivan Renaissance. It was a prize that Sullivan, that our beautification group won. And we put it towards generators.
Generators.
Well, at the time, I thought, at the time I did think it was generators, but it turned out to be a lot more costly than we knew. So than we expected. I think that's how we called you. Actually, you know, Colin, I, I I think that's, that might be the first introduction we had to Delaware Engineering was to get a, our code enforcement officer required that we had an engineer report or survey about what type of generators we needed. You did that, right? Yes. So anyway, the money, it wasn't a significant amount of money for the job that had to be done. So we couldn't spread it all, all around.
So you couldn't spread it all around. I hope it doesn't extrapolate to this financing of grants that we are envisioning for this seven and a half million project, which is not, may not come to pass. It's a hypothetical situation. Is that correct? With, there's a big F and a might.
I'm a little confused. Could you repeat that question, please?
You know, these grants that are going to offset the cost of this project are these hypothetical situations are just pie in the sky that we are relying on and wind up not getting anything. As in the, didn't get enough money to buy generators. It wasn't sufficient to buy one, if I'm correct.
No, I didn't even buy one.
To answer your question honestly, there is no guarantee that a grant would be obtained. We certainly hope that, we certainly hope that one will. But if one is not obtained, the town is not under any obligation to pay for this project themselves.
Until such time as this town board awards a, a contract to a, to a successful bidder to actually construct this project, the town is not obligated to spend a dime on constructing this project.
Can I have that written in stone?
Well, yeah, no, that's, that's the law. What, what we're trying to do right now is we're trying to apply for potential funds and grants. This meeting is. Go ahead.
I want to make it explain very clear for the betterment of the town, but at the same time, I want to live within my means. You know, for, right now I pay over $400 every quarter for my water bill and I don't know who presented that original investment of 200 bucks. I don't know where that 200 bucks came. And I don't like being equated to other parts of the, of the state. You know, we are a town in ourselves and I think it is behooves us to spend rationally and within our budget, within our means. Don't you think so?
I, I think, Colin, that's exactly what the attorney for the town mentioned. If we are not able to secure any assisted funding, then the town board has to look at how much money can we spend and how much of a project can we do? Helen was very clear in the beginning of this, that 7.5 million dollars is a cap. That is, when we looked at it, what can we do? What needs to be done? What's important? This is what we came up with. Now what we need to do is see how much funding we're going to have and how much the board is going to be able to put forward. All or none.
I mean, there's definitely an improvement, but you know, like I said, I like to live within my means.
Well, and we would like to not.
As you are, as you're aware, it's not all the citizens of the town. It's only those that live within the water district that'll be.
Correct. You are, you are considered a special district and town funding cannot be used within a special district, only those that are served by it. That is, we're, the board is very clear on that.
I'm cognizant of that fact too. And that's why I ask these questions. It's not that I impede progress, but progress with due diligence.
If I may respond to a couple of points. It is true that the town is a town itself and is not the same as the rest of the state. The reason Helen brings up state averages is because we are trying to get money from the state and the state. The state puts where they put their monies based on averages. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. And to be seriously considered, more state money, there are certain percentages that the state kind of requires that a municipality meet when it comes to water charges versus NHI. This, this seven and a half million dollar number was designed to allow the town to have, we believe, the best chance of being considered by the state. Now that seven and a half dollar, seven and a half million dollar number is not, it is not required that the state will, or the town will spend that much money. It is easier to remove parts of the project once funding has been allotted than it is to add more to the project. What we typically do is we include as much as possible in these funding applications. And if the results are favorable to the town, we do as much as we can. If they're less favorable, then it's much more easy to remove portions of the project than it is to add more later on. What we're trying to do is get the best potential possible funding for the town. We're trying to apply for that now. If we are not successful, the town does not have to proceed with all or any portion of it.
One final question, Mr. Supervisor. Is there any possibility we can have a copy or view, a hard copy of this project?
That plan and report, I believe, is already online on the, on the town's website.
Yeah, Colin, it should be online, but we do have hard copies and they've been available for several months, I believe. Right, for review. Yeah, not to, not to remove from the, unfortunately not to remove from the town hall.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather thick. So yes, we do, you, yeah, it is, it is available for review. And Crystal's checking to see if it's on the website. I, I thought it was, pretty sure.
Thanks and good.
Thank you, Colin.
You got any questions for Joe, maybe for Dave? Besides the 95 year old distribution system, what requirements are mandated by the health department?
By the health department specifically in regard to the distribution system. I don't know that there are any, there are recommendations. For example, it is recommended that water mains be at least four inches in diameter. There are water mains throughout the system that are two inch, one inch, or even three quarter inch in diameter. So part of this project would be to increase the size of some of those small water mains. There's also, there's also a situation with older cast iron pipe that sometimes happens, which is called the vercculation. Where essentially a specific type of rust builds up on the inside of the pipe. So orange lines, no, a orange line can easily become a one inch line. It's kind of crazy to see it. So that's another thing that we believe some of the older portions of the district would have cast iron because of the timeframe in which they were constructed. So the proposal would be to use Dr. Iron, which is much less susceptible to the vercculation. Another health department requirement, and I believe the diameter issue has to do with fire protection. Difficult to get fire flows out of the water main. I'm getting confirmation on that. They all, smaller mains also result in lower pressure in the area. You have a number of problems. We also talked about dead end mains. That's where the water main goes down the street. It doesn't connect anything else to the end. That water has a, has a tendency to sit in the main. You can end up with discolored water or tasting water. It doesn't. When the water flows, it tends to be healthier and the water pressure is better. So what we're proposing is there's a couple of cases where a water main is very close to another water main, but doesn't connect a couple more feet and you would have, you would remove that dead end. In the case where we can't do that, we're talking about maybe installing a relatively inexpensive fitting which would automatically flush that wall at intervals that would be, you know, controlled by the town water department to allow the water to flow, not to sit in the main. Those are some of the health issues that we're trying to address in this project.
Curious as to what the health department had to do with this. So, such the CH.
They would need, the health department specifically would need to review every part of the design of the project. They do oversee any improvement projects to a water system. So they, they would need to oversee, not oversee, but they would need to review and approve the plans before anything is constructed.
Mr. Collins, you mentioned earlier the average income. The state, you know, put a lot of emphasis on the average income for, for the grant proposal for monies to come in. It's, I believe it was mentioned Narisburg, $40,000 is the average income.
More than that now.
I believe it's in the forties.
Yes, in the forties.
I don't have the number off.
So here is that information obtained from, wouldn't it improve us to take a survey of the actual 340 customers that will bear the debt rather than, you know, a larger picture to perhaps come in with a better number?
You know, that is a possibility. And I believe that's actually something that was discussed with Candace Ballmer of RCAP Solutions. One, one service that they do provide to municipalities is they will do income surveys. I, I know that she specifically did an income survey for the town of Hartwick North. They have a hamlet with a water district, kind of similar to here. Unfortunately, in that case, when they did the income survey, the, the results were that essentially the wealthiest people in the town lived within the hamlet and it did not improve their, did not improve the NHI, you know, for funding eligibility. That might not be the case here, but it also might.
You can consider doing just districts within the water district at one point, looking at certain areas with Candace. But then I think she said that that was.
And I was also making the assumption that people would willingly give up their incomes.
That is something that the town of Hartwick had issues with. A certain percentage of responses required and it took quite a long time for that, that number of people to respond. But it is a possibility.
I just thought with the smaller pool, 340.
Yeah, well, these numbers come from Amer, the census, actually. And there, and the hamlet, which is essentially the water district, essentially is a separate census district. And then there's the town of Tustin. So there is a separate district for them. Census, it's never.
I'll just take a public comment to just make it all tangible. If you went and did the hamlet, if the town average is 40,000, it's going to be higher considerably. High. You're going to blast yourself right out of it.
I think the number that's being batted about is probably the hamlet number anyway. And it is, it's much more than four. It's like. Well, of course you go back. I think this is based on 2010 or something like that. I don't know, whatever census.
Jane, I can, I can address that. It's, it's actually, it's based on census data, but it's based on the 2018 community survey. Yeah, so the, the census is done every 10 years and that's everybody they count. Yeah, so the, the census is done every ten years and that's everybody they count. But then every year they do a sampling of the population so that they can estimate changes in between census. If that helps. So it's technically, it's estimated, but it's based on two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Helen.
I think we fulfilled an obligation to the people.
I have, I have a couple of questions. Joe, the, the outline shows that we, you're gonna replace thirty-eight thousand nine hundred feet of pipe. Okay.
Yeah.
That's basically the whole system. And plus you're gonna add about sixty-eight hundred dollars, that's sixty-eight hundred feet of new line. You're also gonna replace water mains of four, four-inch diameter or, or smaller. So what would you replace them with?
We would, we would say we would replace those with six-inch diameter duckaline pipe as opposed to whatever material they currently are, which might be cast iron, it might be duckaline, it might be, I think there's probably some copper other materials. We, we would like to see a six-inch minimum for water mains if possible. And like I mentioned before, much of the additional mains would be small sections to connect dead ends to other existing lines. There are also a couple of significantly larger sections, one that I believe would connect ninety-seven, one portion of water mains on ninety-seven to the other, which is currently an unserved area. That is, I believe, lower on the list because it would be relatively expensive. It would allow a few new in-district properties to be served. And it would only make dead ends, but that would be a relatively expensive.
So, so that would be, that would be something that we could make a decision on going forward?
All of these are something that could be decided upon. We have, we have tried to prioritize this from what we believe is most pressing to what we think is least pressing. What we're trying to do is wrap every, everything that could potentially be done that would benefit the water district. But when we apply and we can get a determination on the maximum potential project. And like I said, it's easier to remove parts from the project than to add them later on. So if we were to get a grant of X, and we said, well, for now we also want to do this, let's make it X plus Y. That's pretty difficult to do. If we want to say, all right, we got X, but we can't really do these couple of things. Usually the funding agencies are, are much more amenable to removing portions of the project and adding. And that's not to say they, they won't allow you to add, but there's a lot more for you. It slows things down. Sometimes they require entirely new reports. Sometimes they require amendments to reports.
It might also require redoing things that you're doing tonight. You might need to do another two oh two, be proceeding with the hearing and the additional findings. So that's the reason why generally, as Joe's saying, you establish at the onset the, the, the maximum extent of the scope of what you might do. And then you adjust accordingly based upon what you find once, because once they design it, then you'll get a sense of, and, and then once you bid it, then you'll get the real sense of what the cost is because all the engineer can ever do is give you a best guess estimate of what they think the cost might be based on what they see on, on prior work that they've done. But the economy can entirely skew what somebody might bid in either direction, by the way. You, you know, depending on what's going on and what kind of work is, is out there and what kind of work is available. You can get a great price or you can get a, you can get a crazy high price too. Materials drive the cost as well and it's a tough time right now.
Right now, materials are, everyone says the materials are very expensive right now. That is true. But we've also had several, personally, my company's had several bids, bids that have gone in the last four or five months, but the prices came in surprisingly low. People are looking for work right now. So sometimes you never really know until you bid, like Ken said. But we have several steps before we have to, before we get to bidding. And at any point, we can decide to either do or not do any part of it.
Another small question is you, you're proposing to construct the new booster pump station on, at the well at, on ninety-seven? Now, how, how much of an increase in PSI would you get by putting that in?
Well, that would be based on the size of the well. You can essentially dial it into almost whatever you want. So we would design it to, well, before we designed it, we would have to do specific testing in the area to determine exactly what we think the pressure is. I know Dave has done pressure readings out there and some of them had come back surprisingly low. So we would design that pump specifically to increase that, to arrange the.
Joe, would that, would that affect the, the, let's say, I know where he was talking towards the end of the line there, but what about the people on the other end of the line? Is that gonna increase their PSI?
No, probably not. Have significant impact on other portions of the district, the way it would be set up. Probably would mostly be that area. We are looking at some other things that I might try to do to get other portions of the, of the district kind of more in line with what we would like. Dead-end lines, increasing the size of pipes, those sort of things, we think should help in some of those other areas that have some trouble.
Joe, there were some issues on that specific end of the line that you're talking about and, and what Al is referring to booster pumps in residences?
Yes.
And that was one of the reasons why this particular part of the project came up?
Yeah, so there are, there are people we believe that have residential, you know, booster pumps within their houses. So that they can have water circulating throughout their house at a, at a reasonable pressure. We would be looking to have them remove those and replace that with a town-controlled pump station. That would provide them with adequate pressure at the, at the curve as opposed to them having to boost their pressure inside their house. That, that is what, that was the object of that.
Okay. And another question I had, oh, and your, and your experience. How many, how many, like we have three people plus a superintendent. Is, is that typical for a, a, you know, a water department this size?
Water department this size, I'm not certain. I know that that is not, that is not an unusual number of people to have for a water system. I also know that the, I believe Ben has pointed out that some of the, some of the guys that are working under Dave are working to become licensed. And once they're learned, you might be able to reduce the number of people you add slightly. Another, another thing to consider is without the level sensing and communications stuff. We've got guys that have to drive from one end of the district to the other just to, just to see what the pressure is at wellhouse three. And if it's a specific level, then somebody has to then drive to the water tank to see what's going on there. Shut off wellhouse one, shut off, turn on this well, turn off that well. So without automation, those guys do have to kind of go all over the place. You're, you're still gonna have people going around looking for leaks and stuff like that. That's another thing. The more leaks there are, the busier those guys are gonna be at home.
And one of, one of the other things that was mentioned was the increased electricity that's gonna be used. Is there a possibility of getting some kind of a solar system tied into those generators and so forth?
That's a possibility, I assume. I am not an expert on solar technology. I could tell you that there is some space near wellhouse three that could be looked at or something like that. That is not coming to focus in the report.
Can I ask a question? Wouldn't it come off, wouldn't the electricity come off the, this kind of electricity that?
That, that is what we are anticipating now.
Because when we had the solar array built, it was built at a hundred and, I don't know, Brandy, some, a hundred and ten percent of our use. So there's, there is.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a buyback situation, isn't it? What I'm talking about is a direct.
Oh, okay. Something different.
Yeah, but I, I assume that the solar is gonna, gonna, you know, collect it and hold it and then use it when it's needed.
What about you? Have batteries by the well? I, I would have to say I don't specifically see a reason that could not be, could not be a possibility. I don't specifically know much about solar.
Thank you.
Joe, can I ask you a question, Joe? Joe? Ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You said that installation of the booster pumps at the far-flung areas of the system does not increase the PSI in the end user. So what purpose does this booster pump really serve?
No, 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 that, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that was not, that was not what I meant. The booster pump would increase the water pressure to the end user. But what it would do is it would increase the water in the system itself and then to the end user. What we have currently is a situation where some end users have their own private booster pump stations within their house. And that is typically frowned upon by, by the health department, I believe. And so what we would do is we would try to replace the need for them to have their own personal private booster pumps within their house by providing the pressure in the system and not in their houses. The other thing I said was that I did not think this booster pump, the way we would design it, would not unduly increase the pressure in other parts of the district. Parts of the district where the water pressure is already high enough. We would not make that water pressure too high by installing this booster pump. It would simply help areas where it was too low. I believe that's what I was trying to say. If I misspoke, I apologize.
Now, you just said there are people with private booster pumps at their places.
That is what we believe, yes.
I, I think I have to correct you on that. All the people on Main Street, all the stores on Main Street, on the riverside have booster pumps maintained and serviced by the members of the water district. We pay for the water district personnel to go in and fix their booster pumps, change their booster pumps, use our equipment to dig the trenches to fix daily. So how is that, we have to support their booster pumps and you said they were private?
Excuse me, this is David.
Colin, yeah, Dave, could you please answer that?
Yeah, Colin, the bu, the pumps that you're talking about on Main Street are for the sewer, not for their water.
The booster pumps on Main Street is for the.
They're not booster pumps, they're sewer pumps. They're for their sewer stations that go down to the bottom of the basement and they're pumped up from their basement, up onto Main Street, then down Fifth Street.
So it's only the sewer that has the booster pumps there?
On Main Street, correct.
Anybody else has booster pumps for their water supply?
We believe there are some in a further part of the district, yes.
Not anybody as far as Crance's, he's at the end of the line. And he is, he, he uses the water pressure that comes from the tank.
Over on ninety-seven, Colin, towards Cackle Town and fifty-two. That's where we're having a water pressure issue.
Cackle Town.
Cackle Town Road by well three.
Yeah, but we don't go all the way down.
Yeah, we do.
Was the water district extended all the way down to Cackle Town?
Yes, sir.
They wanted it.
Route fifty-two.
Route fifty-two. All right, that's something, all right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. By motion, I have a second for Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure to thank Joe for all the hard work and.
Not done yet.
He's not done yet.
Number four on the agenda.
This is the, next would be the next procedural step in, which is with the two oh two B of the town law, which is what results in the ultimate findings and final order. And, and these were prepared, prepared by bond counsel. And they consolidated the two actions, which is fine, into a single, into a single resolution and order. And basically what it does is, is it recites in the awareness paragraph what the town board is contemplating doing, which is, which is making certain improvements to the water system serving the district with a new two hundred and fifty thousand gallon water tank, storage tank, installation of a new booster pump station, well improvements, replacement of existing fire hydrants, water valves and water mains, installation of new automatic flushing stations, and additional fire hydrants, water valves and water main. It recites the fact that the town board adopted a resolution and order calling for the public hearing that you just held in a manner provided pursuant to section one ninety-three of the town law and describing in general terms those proposed improvements and specifying the estimated, maximum estimated cost to be seven hundred, I'm sorry, seven point five million dollars and stating that the town board would meet and hear the persons interested in that subject matter tonight at six thirty via Zoom and in the town hall. It recites that that public hearing was held as scheduled and all persons interested were given an opportunity to be heard. And then it follows up with the actual, the term action, which is based upon the evidence given at the public hearing and otherwise described herein, which is the map planner report and all the prior proceedings. One, the notice of the public hearing described in the preamble is here, was posted and published as required by law and is in all respects satisfactory. Two, the construction of the improvements here and above described is in the public interest. Three, preparatory to solicitation of competitive bids relevant to such construction, definite plans and specifications, and a careful estimate of the expense of those improvements are directed to be prepared by licensed and qualified engineers selected by the town. And the town attorney is hereby directed to assist in the preparation of a proposed contract for execution of the work and to submit the same to this town board for examination and approval. And fourth, that the town clerk shall record a copy of this order in the office of the county clerk in accordance with the requirements of section one ninety-five of the town law. And fifth, that the order shall take effect immediately. So that would be the next step of action would be for the board to adopt that resolution order containing those recitals and those findings. If it's the board's pleasure to do so.
Does the board have any questions regarding that resolution? If not, I would make the resolution for the finding is in order for the increase in improvement facilities in the Narisburg Water District.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next step is, is then is the bond resolution, which was also prepared obviously by bond counsel. It is very standard and typical of a bond resolution. It authorizes the issuance of serial bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed seven million five hundred thousand dollars pursuant to the local finance law to finance those improvements that we've been talking about. And delegates the authority to issue bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of the bonds to the town supervisor. Again, it recites the specific purpose of, of it, which we've already described, which is those improvements, the two hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank and all the replacement and new items of water valves, mains, hydrants. That we've already discussed. Town board plans to finance the total cost of said purpose by the issuance of serial bonds in amount not to exceed seven and a half million dollars in accordance with the local finance law. And the assessment levy and collection of special assessments on several lots and parcels of land within the district, which the town board shall be. within the district, which the town board shall deemed especially benefited by those facilities, meaning the properties in the Water District. And so much of, to be in such just proportion to the amount of benefit. Uh, funding for said purposes being swept through the New York State Environmental Facility Corporation's Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and through New York State Environmental Facility Corporation's Water Grant Program under the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. Other sources of funding may also be available and may be pursued depending upon program requirements and project eligibility. So the point of that is, you may not in the long run wind up, even if you do a seven and a half million dollar project, you may not be borrowing seven and a half million dollars. That's obviously gonna get reduced by whatever other source of funding that you find, grant or otherwise. Uh, the next one determines that the purpose or object is, um, is described as a probably useful life of, uh, the use of purpose of forty years. That's relevant to how long you can borrow the money for. Section four is determined that the proposed maturity of the obligation authorized by, by this resolution will be excess of five. You're, you're certainly not gonna do this in less than five years. It, it would cripple the, the taxpayer if you do it over that short period of time. Um, current funds are not required to be provided prior to the issuance of the bonds authorized by this resolution of section five, proceeds of the bonds authorized by this resolution and any bond anticipation notes will be applied to reimburse the town for expenditures made. Get to the effective date for the specific purpose, purpose herein. Basically what that's saying is if the town lays out of general fund any expenses associated with this, the town gets reimbursed for it by the, by the, by the fire, by the, uh, Water District. Because again, this, the ultimate cost of this has to be borne by the people that are benefited, not, not, not by the town at large. Um, each of the bonds that are authorized, this is section seven, each of the bonds authorized by this resolution, any bond anticipation notes will contain the recital of validity prescribed by section fifty-two of the local finance law, the faith and credibility of the town will be pledged, uh, for the payment of the, uh, of the principal and interest. An annual appropriation will be made in each year sufficient to pay that principal and interest, uh, on those bonds and be completely payable. They shall be annually levied on the several lots and parcels of land within the district, a tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest of those bonds. Section eight, um, authorizes subject to provisions of the local finance law, the power to authorize bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of the serial bond. Basically what that's talking about is, as this project go along, goes along, we'll short term borrow the money with bond anticipation note. And once the full amount is expended, it'll then get rolled into a, a final bond issue, which will be the long term financing. That way you don't, you don't take the whole seven and a half millions or whatever it is upfront. You, you borrow it as you need it, you only pay interest on what you've got outstanding at that time. Again, it, it, it gives you the flexibility to make this, 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 um, least impactful economically on the, on the taxpayers in the district as possible. Um, and it, and the, and the supervisor, as the chief fiscal officer, is the one who's authorized to execute these documents on behalf of the, the Water District and the town. Supervisor is also, also authorized to execute a, a project finance agreement. Um, that's the way financing works with the, uh, Environmental Facilities Corporation. You have a formal financing agreement that you, that you enter into with, with that. And the supervisor is, under section ten, is also authorized to take such actions, exits of other documents as may be necessary for this, um, to be, uh, a tax-free issuance. And that's important because what purchases of the bond, whether it's Environmental Facilities Corporation or anybody else, if it's tax free, the interest rate is lower than if it's taxable. And, um, section eleven is the validity of the bond, um, can only be, uh, contested only if um, such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose to which the town is not authorized to expend money. The provisions of law which should be complied with, uh, um, basically what happens is twenty, within twenty days after this republishing noted, what's called an estoppel notice. And that gives, that starts a twenty day clock for anybody to challenge it. And, um, otherwise if they're, uh, if, if the obligations are issued in violation of the, uh, of the New York State Constitution, none of which will happen, um, won't do anything that's not provided by, per law or by the constitution. Anybody, but anybody who felt the need to challenge that would have a window of twenty days to do that if they saw fit to do that. And section twelve is what authorizes the publication or the summary thereof, and I'm sure that bond council will provide if they have it already, that notice. And that's the estoppel notice that we're just talking about. So that's the resolution. And this resolution takes effect immediately upon its adoption, if it is so adopted. It needs to be adopted by a super majority of the board, which means there needs to be four affirmative votes of the board in order to adopt.
Board have any questions? The attorney? Make a motion.
Not, not my first ride at that, really.
Make a motion, uh, authorizing the issuance of the serial bond with town of Hudson. And the aggregate principal amount not to exceed seven point five million dollars. Pursuant to the local finance law and financed certain improvements to the water system serving in Neersburg Water District and delegating the power to issue bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such bonds to the town supervisor.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I'm in on it.
I think we have four people.
Four point three. Um, I would like to have a discussion about our water rates. And I know that we had passed a resolution to implement those rates, uh, for the current billing cycle, which would begin July first. And, uh, I'm looking to the board to extend that time and not do it now until I would like to see it in the final quarter, which would be the October, November and December billings.
Which, which builds the usage of.
It would be the usage for October, November, December. It would be billed on the thirty-first of December. That gives the people right now that are gonna get their January bill, or their, uh, excuse me, their July bill, um, it would give them the next quarter to make any adjustments that they wish to make as far as conservation efforts. But it would also give us time. We've got some, some issues that have come up. Two that I see that I'd like to, you know, give the superintendent of, uh, water and sewer the time to take care of. One is, uh, our not-for-profits. And the other is also a not-for-profit that was brought up to me is the cemetery that's down Blanco, because they're, they're hooked up into the district. When we've taken our water rates and we are now paying our budget with our rates, not using the tax to supplement our rates to, to get our budget paid for. Um, for the thirty-five dollars a quarter, your not-for-profits were paying thirty-five dollars a quarter because they weren't being taxed on their property tax. Whereas if I have a home in the district, I was paying my thirty-five dollars for the, the water usage. But then I was being taxed for the rest of the money in order to make the district whole, because our, our rates were not making our, our budget whole. Um, so that's taken someplace like a cemetery. And they're gonna now go to the minimum usage, which we said would be one twenty-seven. Because they're not, they don't get taxed. But now we have tripled. You know, they have become a burden. And I think that's something that we need to look at before we.
I think, I think also, um, by the way it was being done, where we were taxing people on top of the, the fee that they were paying. Those people, the, the commercial people, for example, were not being taxed at the same rate. So I think that's, that's another consideration too.
So I, I think there's some things who I, I'd like to see cleaned up. Um, Dave, are you still with us?
Yes, Ben.
Okay, um, I know you, you've got some more stuff that you would like to go over as far as, um, some assessed properties or some people that are, have property that's in the district but not be in charge. But you've, you've found some stuff that you could utilize some extra time on?
Yep.
Go ahead, Jane. I know you're gonna say.
I know. I don't like it because it's just delaying the inevitable and, uh, uh, it's funny that's not gonna come in that we would have otherwise had come in. But, so you're asking that we start billing when? October?
It will be the October, November, December.
Which bill comes out? I thought we.
December thirty-first.
Right. So that's a quality of year that we didn't have that been coming. All right. I mean, everybody, I, I, you, you have to live with it. I just, uh, I.
Because the district is made whole, although we've got some expenses this year, um, much like the leak on ninety-seven. Our district has been made whole through taxes and.
I understand that. I understand that.
And I'm just trying to lessen the burden.
At this point, it's not gonna make a big difference.
It's not, but I would like to also give Dave the opportunity to, um, to clean up some of the housekeeping that we've found since we've implemented this since the last board meeting.
But we're not gonna change the rates?
No, the rates are staying the same.
So you're really essentially saying we're going to fix what shouldn't have been fixed?
I'm looking, I'm looking to buy Dave some time to get his paperwork in order because it's not where it should be. And I'm using it as we're trying to help the taxpayers get ready for this big hit. So yes, I'm using it this time. We need more time to implement it.
All right.
I'm just trying to make Mike think that we're doing something good for him.
Well, I make that motion that we delay it. I gotta agree with that. Give a little time for the people to prepare for this and I think it's an idea. I make that motion.
We've been talking about it for months, but all right.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay. Oh, come on.
I'm allowed. I'm allowed to say.
You are allowed.
Uh, four point four. I'm speaking with the court clerk. Um, there's an ability for the court to apply for a J cap grant, uh, justice court. I believe it's an assistance program in which they fund things. And she was looking to try to, uh, apply for one of the grants in order to, uh, use if we want to with the new building on Main Street. Either, well, either, either in addition or.
Renovation sometime.
That's great. Except you have to know what you're doing before you.
Well, it would require us getting an engineering firm involved in drawing plans. Ken, are you familiar with these at all, the J caps?
I know, I, I'm familiar with them to know that they exist, but it's, and they do them manually and it's through the, it's through the court system and man.
They're doing every year.
Finance.
Isn't this.
Yeah, you're, usually she's in the three, four, five thousand dollar area.
Yeah. Usually they buy computers and hardware.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, um, well, I, I'm never against it, of course, but, um, you have to know what you're doing before you apply for grabs. So, so you can't just say yes.
Correct.
It, what you might wanna do is get a planning grant.
I was, I was thinking that that might be something that when you speak with Jocelyn, you would be able to guide her into.
And what, what.
Is this because I said no? Yeah.
How much of a grant is she looking? She was looking for thirty thousand. But again, I think maybe we can get Jane to sit down with her, or even I'll sit down with Jane and her and.
Yeah.
Look it over.
Okay. I'm ha, I'm happy to do that. So we don't need a resolution. That's just, um.
Well, thirty thousand.
No, uh, yeah.
We'll, we'll take you.
You have to know what you're, okay.
Does the board have any other business that's not on the agenda? If not, I am going to open the floor to public comments. Did I miss something? Okay.
Oh, they have.
Uh, when these bonds are finally issued, do you anticipate selling them to the public? Do they get placed, uh, with investment banks?
They'll actually will buy. Well, in this particular instance, the likelihood is that they will be purchased by the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is, which is a, an arm of the New York State, which is, they've got a revolving loan fund because it's the, it's the, it's the cheapest way to finance this thing. We'll get it, what is, I think was described in the presentation. The district isn't eligible for, for zero percent financing, but with, but they've got three levels of financing with EFC. Zero percent hardship financing, subsidized financing and market rate financing. If we're gonna do market rate financing, we can see what their rates are and you could go compare to what a bank or other investor might pay for, for, for that bond at that point. But given that it's subsidized rate that's available, the likelihood is that's where it's gonna be placed, is with Environmental Facility Corporation. It's better. No, 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 well, the public, uh, other than it's a public or semi-public entity that, that's borrowing, that's New York State revolving fund for the financing.
Is that an invitation? We're thinking of funding the.
Might as well send mine seven and a half million dollars.
Find it here, we.
Buy a water bomb.
You wanna invest that seven and a half million in a, in a tax-free bond, right?
I just, uh, have more of a question and a comment. So under, I'm, I'm trying to understand, uh, the billing versus the operation and the cost of producing the water. Uh, so what you were collecting from the users was not meeting the operation cost. So now you were paying the rest, the, the rest of the operation cost through the tax money that you collect out of all of the town.
No, just in the Water District.
Oh.
If, if you live within the Water District and you looked at your bill.
You paid your town taxes.
Yeah. It would, you would have a thing that would, would say.
No, I thought you were using some of the property taxes.
And, and that's, uh, it's a good point to make because that's one of the most, uh, misinformed thing that people find out is you're using my town.
Wouldn't upset me that much because of what it contributes to.
But there are, believe it or not, there, and I think Joe or could probably know about it, is a lot of mu, small municipalities like we have here, the town becomes obligated to pay for these districts that cannot support themselves. So it's not in the best interest of a town board to allow the districts to become dysfunctional or to the point where they can't fend for themselves.
You see, well, out of, out of the district already paying, you know, whatever this seven to ten thousand for the well and the electric to produce their own water, you know? And then it was coming out of their property taxes. I just. No balance, everything. All right.
You're welcome. My question?
If not, I would make a motion to enter an executive session for the, uh, purpose of possible, possible land acquisition.
Oh, um, yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Folks, thank you for coming out. I appreciate the questions.
And Joe has a long trip home. Thanks, Joe, for making it to.
Thank you.
July third.
Are you coming?
Yeah.
It's all right. I'll stop by. July third, my house, three o'clock. I'll wait and combine some, some food, hot meals. Everybody knows where I live. Find out from Jane. I'm just up from the town garage.